Um, we're kind of leveraging in some of our other donors' funds who have a passion for this job of thing. So although we're not putting funds in this point in time, we're already bringing in some other funds that cover the Sandy area. So we've gone above and beyond what you will have. Um, yes, we take a contribution to cover our costs, just so you're aware. Um, but I hope what we bring to the overall equation is a process transparency, diligence, monitoring the impact. We can give you any stories you want on any grant that we've made. I think what I would say as well is if you actually um, you know, if you want to go and visit groups, if you want to, to, they'd love to have you. And I know you're out and about all the time, so you're probably visiting them. But if you specifically want to go and visit a group that this has funded and think we can help, we're always happy to arrange visits and everything. So your new fund will launch at the start of September. It will go on the website. It will be open. We'd love you to share it with caution because you'll be heavily oversubscribed. Because I'll be honest with you, the funding situation is dire at the moment. The need is doing that. The funding is doing that. What we're seeing is that the arts and culture space is absolutely declining for other funds that used to be available. So those groups are starting to come in as well. Um, I've even had some universities asking if we could help some of their um students do this advanced backgrounds because their versaries are not being topped up. So I think having this fund is fantastic, but be prepared for it to be oversubscribed. Um. But effectively, we'll keep pushing it. We'll keep working hard and it will be open for applications for six weeks. And then the panel will sit in November. And you will effectively look to reward the money uh pretty much, I would say, in the centre of time, wouldn't we? Because once we've awarded a grant, so the first phase is get the applications in. The second phase is check that everything is eligible and we're not going to bring you into disrepute by giving funding to a charity that is not appropriate. The third phase is send out terms and conditions. We then do another round of diligence because you'd be surprised at how many times we get second different bank accounts statements, don't we?
Uh huh.
So we do all of those checks to make sure the funding's going to the right people and the right bank accounts. And then what will happen thereafter is that grant will effectively run for a year and at the end of that year, they have to provide us with a monitoring report. And if they don't provide us with a monitoring report, they're blacklisted basically and on our database, you literally can see overdue and monitoring. We don't sit and wait for the monitoring report to magically appear. We do actually tell them they're late. We actually tell them they're late before they're late, kind of stuff if that's possible. Um, so we really do try to keep engaged because we know these community groups are absolutely vital. But at the same time, if they don't deliver what they promised they would deliver, then we will hold them accountable. And we will not get funding until we're satisfied that they're addressed the concerns. So I hope throughout that process, we'll align with your strategies, but we're very bigger, uh rigorous, we're very diligent. Because we respect that this money was your money and that we want to maximise the impact that we can reach. You have those slides. I've gone completely off tangent. Um, but I hope it was useful. Um, because we just felt a little bit of a background. Apologies to those that know us well. And others over there. Um, but very conscious for new people. It's the first time you might come across it and it was only about a second. Only question, by the way, it's chance. I'd like to say.
Any questions? Thanks in person.
Yes, you say that you you take so much for your costs.
Yep.
What is your cost set to ten percent? Which would be constantly if we were one on one before.
Three thousand, you've gifted us thirty thousand, I think, haven't you? Yeah, you've already got thirty seven thousand to award because of other monies we've leveraged in.
I'll pass the ten percent of whatever.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you.
If it makes you feel better, we're a charity as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's.
Because Adrian, you're new, so I'm learning. I do know a little bit about one story. Um, do the council get a list of all the applications before we do strike during your investigation or work on them?
No, so, I mean, let me introduce Sophie, who is the person in charge of your fund. Do you want to talk through how the process works?
So people submit applications to us and at that point we go through the due diligence process. Um, which involves looking in detail at constitution accounts, bank accounts, safeguarding to make sure that everything is in place. At that point, when due diligence has been completed, we will make a recommendation on what. That list of assessments is then sent to the panel for the panel to make a decision. So the council doesn't receive a list of applications at that point, but the panel of which there are councillors on will receive that to make their decision.
Will we share all, will we share all applications though?
Oh, yeah.
Including the ones that we do not recommend you do? And we will give you the reasons why sometimes it's constitution and it's.
I just think that as part of the due diligence on your first stage is councilors may have a more local knowledge of that organisation and be able to assist in their duties. And then I'm inactive, you know. So.
And I think that's why we have members on the panel. But if I say we did six hundred charities a year, we're most a charity in in the place that we don't know and we're very unconscious bias is something we're really conscious of. Thanks. Um, so it's there are good reasons why we do it, but the panel has the right to say, actually, we prefer that one over this because it aligns more with a strategic objective. That's what panels, panels' role will be. Yeah.
Who else sits on the panel? Sophie, David, you know, so.
Well, I have a next, but I'm sorry, I can't say a bunch of names.
Is it because like every parish, every town council has a representative, but there's a lot of places, many things.
And there's still about ten people on the panel, aren't there?
There aren't going to be that many, but I think there's four or five.
Yeah. So not every single area is in that.
Can we just tell each other a few words?
Thank you.
Who's on it?
Just one?
There's definitely, there's definitely.
You sell, you're Ryan, you're honour.
You're right.
It's a very.
Well, fine.
I'm sorry to ruin my.
Sean, you're my dear.
Sean and Brian, yeah, the three of you, yeah.
Those are new people in the meetings because I tell them I keep up with them.
Yeah, yeah. Have we got the date yet?
Not a day.
Not a day, so we'll do it soon. Yeah. I will. Perfect.
Do you want to? Yes. When it comes to funding? Do you have a minimum and a maximum?
Yeah.
Just, obviously, I mean, I know you have used guys kicking around for quite a while now, it's just whenever I've been pushed to send people your way, it tends to, the tendency to give groups who don't want a lot of money.
Yeah.
And then it seems like they're sort of getting brushed aside for bigger groups who want quite a bit of money. When, when you do your due diligence, obviously, do you not think about, well, if we did more little groups, the money would go further rather than giving a huge amount of money to certain groups?
So the fund is up to five thousand pounds. And we usually say that as a minimum of two hundred and fifty, just because of efficiency, essentially, if we make teeny tiny grants. Um, the process gets very protracted. Um, if we consider the applications that we have in, we look at the quality, if it seems like somebody has struggled with the process, then we often get in touch. We give the, we give the applicants the best chance to shine, basically. If there's something missing, we get in touch and we ask a few more questions. But we don't want people who don't have a team of big writers out back to get passed over for a big charity that have very slick operation in the way that you're talking about. But also, please refer people to us. If they're looking at the process and they're a little bit quieted because they're a volunteer and they don't work full time. Give them my name, my number, my email. I will happily have a chat with them, but then we'll be through the process.
Good. And what I would say is most of the smaller groups will be select themselves.
Yeah.
So hence that offer. And we offer it to every charity on any front.
In the past, I've been told, I don't even know where to start.
Yeah. Now, we did do a funding search anyway. With my man and the dog plan up.
It wasn't, it wasn't busy.
It wasn't busy. We can do another one of those who encourage people. I think if you were to look at um overall, what we tend to fund is most of the groups we support have a turnover less than a hundred and fifty K. So actually, it is really quite small groups. Um, but we do appreciate some people, they can't cope with a lot of money, I agree. Because actually, we just need a small amount. But yeah, offer's there.
Is it really charities? Charities, they have to be a recognized charity, we get from it?
Social enterprises. Um, we also accept applications from companies and into our guarantee and social enterprises. Um, the list will be fully in the guidelines, which we made available when it goes live. Um, if your income is over five thousand pound a year and you have charitable aid, so you have to be registered for the charity commission, that's one of the due diligence checks that you run. Because at that point, you're going to need to regulate it.
So it covers C I Cs?
Yes.
It covers C I Cs, but bear in mind that C I Cs should be trading and seeking to generate an income.
Yes.
And what we often find is that they're grant dependent. So we will play bad cop and we will sometimes say you need to go and change your structure or get more income.
Well, unfortunately, all I'm working on is changing your structure, that is a better metaphor, so.
In grant funding?
Uh, sports.
Yeah, so that's more a sports group, are they? Or, yeah, so they, they often will have a different constitution. And yeah, would someone else have a question?
Yeah, sorry. Well, it wasn't a question really, it was just obviously I've sat on the panel um for the last four years. Um, and it has gone out across varying ones. And obviously, what you were saying, uh Lee. Um, they did hold several surgeries, I think, which weren't greatly, people didn't um turn up to sort of ask how to go about it and whatnot. And we did, and one of them, we, I think you actually did run a smaller grants. At one point, we had a little bit left. I think we only had about five grand left. Um, and you did run a much smaller one, which again, I don't know how well received that.
Yeah.
That actually was.
Yeah.
Um, but again, I think it does frighten some of the groups that they have to be constituted and they have to have proper bank. Because you might have little nanners knitting circle who might just collect a pound, but they don't necessarily fall into the group where they can.
Yeah, and I think that's always a great example. Those knitting nanners will be in a community hub and could the community hub add them to their application to provide the running costs to help them run that session?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, and that is often the best way because we recognise in every park's family, there is a hub. Which is just the, the lifeline of many, isn't it? So that might be a different conversation that you explore and we've done that sometimes. And another way we've addressed that is sometimes we go through a third party that we trust to support those groups. But sometimes you just can't work brand group to us, so um, but yeah, please, just reach out.
I don't, any other questions? Have you found thank you for the presentation, Sister?
It was a brilliant one, wasn't it? Yeah.
Was it a good one?
It was good. And I didn't see yet the high shams.
Oh, it was definitely neat.
Marvelous. Did you?
In the.
So I will apologise for not saying hello if I failed. As I've demonstrated until I do that, I don't really know who half the people are. So, uh guys, um, yeah, thanks for you and working with us again this year. So, yeah.
I'm sorry. Um, please, some new councillors. Um, to ask on, um, the last item, a councillor Belle was supposed to send it, but I didn't actually ask was everyone in agreement or was there any objections? Is everyone in agreement for councillor Belle?
Yeah.
Thank you so much. I was still keeping the endpoint north here. Um. We move on to item seven of the qualification. This is the funds. Um, if any of our guests this evening have any questions, they would like to tune the council now is is your opportunity.
Need to join questions. I'm going to ask the councillors. Not everybody, I'm not saying everybody, but if councillors within their social media just every now and then could say something good about Stanley. Because when you look at some of the councillors' social media, they, they publicise and they complain about everything wrong with Stanley. Everything is wrong with how you're doing. I've lived in this family for years and years. And it's honestly, it's a great place to live. And it gets really tedious. And sometimes I think, okay, so you're complaining about this, you're complaining about this. Why do you want to represent this there? And it's just every now and then, and there are some councillors who are more guilty than others. You could just actually say what a great place it is. Is that possible? Anybody prepared to commit to that? God, no.
I would certainly admit to never uh.
Look out. I mean, had anybody else seen this, it's still to the sun. Facebook was taking this where they complain about the fact they're complaining about. They complain about everything. They complain about the council. Well, say enough. If they weren't part of the national council, you're allowed to complain. But it's tedious and it's really depressing. You know, nobody ever comes on and says, you know, and we've had, you know, them talking about what a horrible place Fun Street is. Well, it's actually not that bad. Better than a lot of fun streets in the country. But they stand in the middle of Fun Street and they say, isn't this awful? And they represent Fun Street. And it's just, I just wish they would just lay off it for a minute and make, have a discipline that at least once a week on Facebook or whatever, they put something holiday night about Stanley.
Yeah, come on.
Councillors, we will try and comment on the floor. I think it would be ridiculous not to take up that challenge.
Yeah.
Um, um, I would like someone in this room to propose a motion that all councillors who are on YouTube or use social media would at least once a fortnight, once a month.
Yes, at least.
And can I have a second of my voice? Are we all in favor?
Yeah.
Abstentions. There are no abstentions.
Thank you.
We will try to endeavour. Some of us might miss the fortnight, but we will get there.
Thank you.
Um.
I'll make the same time here if you know what.
Yes.
Absolutely. Can we say thank you to Tessa for, for bringing that to our attention?
Oh, it's my day. Thank you. Thank you.
She was feeling very pretty many new.
Are there any other questions from the panel? We move on to item eight, confirmation of the minutes to approve the true record and sign the minutes of a court of citizens held on the twenty fourth of June, twenty twenty. Have we all read them? Have we all agreed that we are truly plotting? Yeah. Thank you so much. Jane, thank you so much. We have a few questions to set with. Thank you. It's finally all settled. We move on to item nine. We see the two minutes, couldn't be minutes, it should put just the number out if you want to, don't move. We have two minutes. Um, to receive the notice of minutes from the finance and general purposes committee held on the tenth of June, twenty twenty five. Can we call the three draws minutes?
Yep.
Yeah, awesome. Thank you. And to receive and note the minutes for the policy and H R committee held on the sixteenth of June, twenty twenty five. Can you all? Thank you.
And I just, there, there is, there's actually um an incorrection in the finance and general purposes as well.
Thank you, councillor.
Um, we've got David Tully down as being uh absent and I think it should read Les Timmy. Because David is actually in, is attending the mi- the minute, the meeting. Um, and obviously, he's also in the apologies for absence, but Les doesn't appear anywhere and I believe he isn't in attendance that day.
With Jason. We can add them, can we please? That being, that you. We move on to item ten, housing bank recognition. So we have schedule and fee and schedule which sees bank recognition catching C D and E for April.
And I propose that we take April and May on max and we take C to H.
Excellent. So we are requested to note the attached information. The payment of accounts for April and May twenty twenty five and the bank recognition for April and May twenty twenty five. Are we all agreed?
Yeah.
And you, you move on to item eleven, members initiative report. You know, I just found this much in September. And then yes, are there any objections to defer this to September then?
Mm hmm. It's not tight, and so it's not.
Yeah, I just thought you were speaking about. So we all agreed?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And you. So there um are two policies which we are going to defer to September if everyone is agreed. The reason being, we do not have the July minutes. So you can't agree with them without the policy. So we will defer those. If everyone is agreeing. And yet, objections, thank you. We move on to any um updates for the county councillors. So that will be with Flannan and John. And so I attended the on course stage, which is really good, which I think quite excellent. And I visited Tom Billy Community Centre, obviously, which is a, people will say, well, I think uh the den, crack the den. And this last week, I've got a walkabout in cleaning the neighborhood. And just to go around the areas and find out what needs to be done. And I've got a walkabout clean green, um quite few bits of noise there. Um, and I'm also trying to establish task force to go around cleaning and maintaining bush shelters. And the people that use the bush shelters, I don't eat one person, but I had a company in that one, so I actually saw it. And I just feel that within all of this. So that's what we're trying to do in the image. So. My screen back.
Similarist of things as well, uh. I can see quite large parking, parking, parking. I've been on Newwood Walk round South Slender and uh it was South Blue and West Queens, working with Maple Park. They have numerous things over there, the commercial vehicles part there. Um, the convent, the convent, the commercial vehicles, considering residence part in the village as well, and Paragon's part there. There is some ideas about creating the new parklands in the areas. It's just that I don't think they're called. Um, and it's going to be matching for whether the building is all in particular. Um, trying to renovate actions for just for the actual building and the roads which are very vulnerable, which kind of hurts to stay there. So that's sometimes a problem. And so thanks of God, which is now working for the ministry, which is. That's why, and the second one is I've been starting to visit three new centres. And working for a county council on different assets to project, potentially bringing food assets back in the respite, where the local utility centers in southern Asia as well. So, and so I'm going to have the most, so we're, we're doing our rest to the project. So you could have been first. Um, but here in our refurbishment, should be starting now. Uh, but you give those payments at the end of last year. So you're lucky, so we'll start by going there. That's sad.
Okay. Really. And the council, so that we move on to the planning applications. And you just see there's been numerous planning applications set in advance. And are there any objections that we would like to submit? And no objections?
There is, um, over time uh applications coming with the income, um which are ready to produce. I even said when he looks at his view, if you mean the calls, messages, videos regarding them. There is more than white tail beam, if that makes sense to people. Um, uh more than business, which are good sewer farms. Uh, one of them is going to take up another rare bird sanctuary. And destroy that rare, rare birds. Mark, so I've only given views of scum time council. Um, should we object as a council to it? Should we work with the residents on it?
You can just.
Be involved, be involved, sorry. My accent's going yet?
This is one two really. So have we had the planning applications for those?
They're, they, they were rejected the last time. Burnham Community actually signed forty thousand a time. Objectives on, on one, yes, and we can't cost the council sixteen thousand. Um, because they had to pay that forty thousand back, it certainly costs. And but it's back in again. And we have four ways. I'm trying to read this without glasses. Four bits to get our heads around the edge of the animal. So we'd actually three solar farms going up in here.
How many?
I think it was just the stones.
I think, I think we should be supporting the nearly the lock button door because I, I don't think birds should be, especially at this time of year, it's breeding season. Um, it, it, it was rare birds there, you shouldn't be.
I mean, basically, what it's really feel of it, uh about saying here, I am creating a lot of in south here. Is the whole side of one hill, as you look across the valley, is going to be frequently covered in sore wounds. And the other side, the hanging farm, going down that side is also going to cover sore wounds. One of the community have been running against it, uh their, rather than strictly side here, have been running against it. A lot of the leaders been standing on it as a, I, I did work. One of the guys was going to come as a, um, I, I, I guess, and I, but he wasn't able to make it. So I said that we isn't receiving or supporting the government planning council.
So just to clarify, councillors, when that application comes to us and we have to call can you, can you make that decision? Because you have all the adhesion on your family position. You don't fail to make a decision. Um, until you get that kind of application area. So when that comes, then we can bring that to council, even, you know. If it's.
He's very strong feeling about that because I would then burn up with the protest the last time. Oh, yes, yes, they have. Very strong opposition. And on some of them as well, the Tory party, I remember the early going, oh, this could be a shot. But what is the date? If some, if the next time something is not, it's a camera. I, I do want the actual dates. Um, I've got their numbers, so I haven't been any, I mean, uh, I'll track tomorrow and when it, I'll be giving you the status of dates on them.
Yes. And that was proposed in relation to that, that once the submission is being put in. It's how you can still do it.
it's out of council, do you get notified of it? Depending on when the co- the comments are, whether it can be the next council, or whether we have to hold an ex-ordmine. Yeah, what, what concerns me is that, I don't know the, the system level enough to say, you know, the reason why, I think, hasn't, we've got a re there are cables, do they come back to that? As a term council.
I think the general.
The initial, I think, possible.
It has to come back through. I think, I'm sure, yeah, the two, the two different things, I get the problem.
Yeah.
These submissions and appeal are two very different things, and I have to tell you, I mean, talent's not my, my bag at all, but, but they're definitely two very different things.
Yes, they are, they're like, I said, I don't know whether it come back to me.
The mutual.
You know. Uh, I will be some chatting tomorrow, then I can be called.
Absolutely.
So that, I was just going to say, that's what we will need to know. We need to know, is it a reapplication? In which case it will come back. If it's an appeal, then we won't say it.
So that's why it's through care, that with the appeals, it will be a panel that are lived in that the grounds for appeal.
Yeah.
However, if we know that it's going to appeal, and the town council feels strongly about something, we can write to the panel and say, will you consider this as part of when you are assessing that appeal?
Councillors, um, so we better take those, we can only do that, that falls within the boundaries of the Stanley town council area. And unfortunately, something that falls in burn pool, woman's pool, is within Stanley town.
I think, I think that you are on board, on board. Sales, because of the.
We'll need, we'll need clarification on that.
Yeah, yeah, because we can only object to things that are.
There's no, this is.
Yeah.
I think.
Sorry, Jane.
Sorry, Jane, we you're correct, and then we'll have to come back to the panel application, when the, when the actual boundaries are of the solar farm.
Yeah.
And then even the smallest part of that, from then, then the same, then then that's, I, I, that's probably the issue without.
Absolutely.
Yeah, you see the drive failed one possibly for around two.
Some of that, yes.
Some as well.
The, the one was a bit.
I can't give the postcodes and you can check there, I don't think you want it, I mean. I'll read you the, the, I think, I keep it.
So I'm not asking hard for anyone's to, with building, because there's a positive borderline is that road, like there was one size, one, one size, right, uh, the, 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 yeah. And it's a burn oak side, where the big windmills are, but the seven fields, it's been.
Yeah, it's also, absolutely.
That's on the burn oak side.
Yeah, on the side, side, there's other, you want to say, there's another field, which goes into it, a lot of people have actually missed.
Well, I think, really, we'll, we'll go all round in a circle. We need full clarification, and then we can make a decision on.
Just to raise it, and see what's here, and support it, you see, and hoping that can do it.
Yeah, what needs, if it's there, it needs to go to an, an, an authority.
Yes.
Uh, so we move on to the scheduled meetings. There is a scheduled meeting attached, uh, attachment L. If you'd like to take a look at that, and that takes you right up to the next year, Adrian. And we all agree, if there's any issues, then obviously you'll just need to let us know. We move on to the next item, which is the event subdue. So councillors requested to note the events of the, has everyone read the events of the, because Alex wants to say anything.
The agenda was set somewhere, because on this, on the agenda of events, okay, yeah, looking forward on for it. Should be.
A better, yeah, yes. And please, we move on to the time and value of the next. We're.
I'm starting with a different, you know, like we have something on the backboard, Tapper, what said earlier, that part.
Yes, we can, let me just give the time and dates. And so it will be, we will be in recess for August, technically. Hope you all enjoy that. Um, and we will be back here in September, where we'll be getting ready for Stanley close.
Mm hmm.
You'll learn to love each of the persons. And I have agreed that Councillor Timmy had written an item that would not normally be brought, but I'm happy for Councillor to be to be.
Um, on the back of what Tessa said earlier, I mean, I totally agree with you, Tessa. Um, so my question of my statement is to councillor Alson. The shape control on the actions of councillor Grimes as leader of the reserve with Stanley town council in regard to his misinformation being posted on social media by him. In reference to his social media course, it happens Stanley town council in re- reference to flying the pride cloud in a warm memorial on the front street. Everybody in here knows there was not a warm memorial.
How come, come from? Anything, council rise to some of this?
Wait, can I finish this? Because you are the leader of the company, and he is part of the organization, is he not?
Yeah, but.
I'll put it first. I'll put you the right to do that. In the front street. The war memorial is three years in boundaries church, not on the front street. And that social media course, but very similar to what Tessa was saying, it is misinformation. Why is causing misinformation? And I think there's, well, either, if I'm only the labor group, if you want to fault me, so maybe for my labor groups, I would be happy with it. So I would like you to highlight this to come according to young people, come to me to talk on, someone's open.
Thank you.
Okay.
We have actually spoken with two hundred and fifty six now.
I told you, so we got, we go, if you see HR, Artful, anything to. We're going to, right.
You want some?
Exactly, I'm where you see HR, Artful, tender, Darren's time, and it's raised the washing, or I guess.
And now I'm.
You know, you see HR. Like the human rights call, yeah. Look, that's nothing to do with that, so if I put it in this thing, I'm, unless it's kind of the, he's hiding behind it, and or two views, I actually, that, that's matter of opinion, and, um, I think having, uh, on the last, maybe scale it might use in the social media, even, which I think I made a pretty clear. Uh, nobody can control personal messages on, or what they're actually saying. It's entirely a personal thing.
But with regards to the flag, who's in?
I, I would, I would say with regard to the flag, I also would have done with the misinterpretation, the reason me, or the other. Well, I love, I, I, obviously, man, if people not like it, it's only for a lot of years, would be, or everybody knows the war memorial to. I've, I've always thought, was a war memorial, I'm gonna question it. If it looks like it does, and it tracks like it does, it must feel that in my name. Having been interacted on it, I'm quite happy to go along with what's going, and I've spoke to Diana upon complications about it. And told her, yeah, it's not a warm memorial, so they, they can't do it. Um, again, I would protest about the flags it fly on, because of the rules, often it's like, we make it. This is because of the rules, I don't reach out a warm. And that would be a personal duty, it's nothing to do with credit, it's nothing to do with the body, it's, it's not a duty.
I see, please.
Just leave up, so then, and the last bill, council, maybe, that was actually the reason that the flag protocol and there's no problem to it. You show, it's a pretty, it was after that, and to look at this, you got to the what flag we can't, can't, well. I don't make comments on it, I mean, as I said, it's a personal thing, so I think it's, I think.
Where's the hat? And quite a say, councillor Grimes is using the councillor thing. So he's portraying himself as a councillor. So that does come under yourselves, but to take him to task, onto running Stanley down. It doesn't look like a war memorial. I think you need to have a look at the war memorials in Stanley. And don't get me wrong, I am absolutely disgusted at the way he has put himself forward as a councillor. And supposedly supporting the area. If he doesn't want to support the area, he should take himself away from being a councillor. We act weak, the councillors in this room are here to help the people of Stanley, not put them down. And I, for one, will not stand for the people like him pulling people down. And there's no reason why the pride flag should not be thrown there. Because we all know someone who is of the gay nature, or whatever nature they wish to be. And we, as people of Stanley, propose to support these people, whatever we, not happy to see them. Thank you.
Yeah. I would also like to say that I have a lot of gay friends, my fact, I'm a friend, he was in Spain last year, been married for twenty three years. I've no objection to the pride flag, but I, I was, they are two versions of pride flag. And they're two variants of the pride organization, and they should be clearly stripped of, even my two gay friends who have been married for twenty two years, with kids, have you that? So I, I would not object to what flag should fly, it may offend me, it may not offend me, depends on which one it can reply.
I'm going to, yeah, councillor Timby. Clare, I'm sorry, I was moving, 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 I'm trying to. I, I just want something out, when you talk about, you, if you say all time hands first.
Yes, well, I'm talking on a personal capacity, I don't understand that, but I'm not talking as a councillor. I'm talking about, there's personal beauty, and that's what social media has a personal base.
And I just, we're just seeing, I'm sort of. And I just said, we the town council, that is the royal way, every member sitting on it, still don't make a corporate decision. That corporate decision was made, and we stand by that decision. If someone wants to change that decision, they need to either bring another names to me, or wait for six months. And that's the rules within this town council, and I'm happy for those rules to adhere to. Councillor Timby, you wish to come in, and to councillor Timby will propose this concession.
And. But, but with great audience, uh, from the can, we could pass it at the last vote council, there's that protocol and the pride cloud, and I realize that's been really, so. But the mortuary, or not the mortuary, is the youth, the cause him to manage with your group. I think, and, um, chair.
Councillor, councillor, yeah, yeah. Councillor Timby, the pressing, this should be some allowance.
I view that we did a good form, but the data member of yours was saying that it was not
acceptable.
Acceptable to cut out misinformation, because Stanley town council, add here.
You, you did come in to, and just, so it's inspirational, which you want for members.
We don't need to pause. Okay.
Thank you. We move on to the exclusion of the pressing public, and that is to result in a republic order submission to reading that nineteen sixty. So they can represent, they just put the pressing board, passing the nature of the exclusives, permitting to the consideration of the foundations of business. That's called listing a prejudice, prejudice to public interest due to the confidential nature of the business to be transacted. But thankfully, I'm getting the.